I'll call this meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Urbana to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Chester. Mr. Cho. Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Roche.
Here.
Ms. Yookman.
Here.
Mr. Warren Brown.
Here.
And Mr. Welch.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Chairman Welch is not here, so we need to elect an acting chairman, which we need to vote on, which...
I move that Mr. Warren Brown be become the acting chair for this meeting.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Let's see, so has everybody had a chance to review the October 18th, 2023 regular meetings minutes? Any additions or corrections? Sir, second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those are adopted. Now, before we get to the written communications, I just, we have quite an audience this evening. I'd just like, at this point, to say that if you could all maintain some order of silence unless you're recognized by the chair to speak at this point in time, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Mr. Wesner, do you have some written communications?
Thank you, Chair, and I do, I think what was presented to the board previously was a memo that I created after the October meeting and after discussions with staff. And so I felt that for tonight's purposes, maybe one of the initial things that we needed to do was kind of address that. And I've got some notes and, you know, sometimes I don't just verbally read what I've got, but I just don't want to forget anything, and so I'm probably just going to read through this, because what I want to do is, I want to give the background for that original memo, when I classify it as an original memo, because there's been some things that have occurred since that original memo was drafted that I think kind of changes the circumstances that we have relative to this particular case as we sit here today. So I want to give the background, offer then kind of my advice or suggestion to the board as far as what the next step, I think, should be by the board. And so just, you know, initially, I want to suggest that it's kind of an unfortunate circumstance that's brought us to seek a resolution to the problem that I identified when staff met with me about the result of the October meeting, in which resulted in a memo that's been distributed to the board and I think was in the packet for this evening. The problem, as I saw it at the time, for case number ZBA 2023-C-5, was that a decision sheet was potentially being prepared, but was going to be legally insufficient because there's no findings of fact relative to the ultimate decision that occurred. In my opinion, that's what needed to occur, and so I know there's a difference of opinion, and I'll kind of get to that later in my commentary, difference of opinion about what the zoning code actually requires relative to the ultimate decision reached by this board for a conditional use permit. But again, as city attorney, you know, I'm advising the board, at least right now, and I'll continue my comments, and the board can have a discussion after that, is that there is a void, I think, that needs to be filled relative to this particular case. And so now what I'm going to do is, I'm going to kind of give you the backdrop for what my original memo was built around, offer an indication of what I believe has transpired since then, and then, again, offer what my recommendation currently is to the board. So what I'll indicate is that, in terms of conditional use permits, the zoning code does not provide an internal appeal process. You know, as we understand, those applications come to the zoning board of appeals for discussion and decision. And so when they reach a decision, the decision of the board needs to be legally sufficient, in my mind, in order to provide a complete record and decision, because ultimately, these decisions can be appealed to circuit court as set out in the zoning code. I believe the language of zoning code clearly requires the board to make findings of fact in relation to a decision reached by the board, and that is whether it's a yes or a no for the application, that I believe a decision sheet needs to be made regardless of the end result. And again, I don't want to restate or reread my original memo, but I did want to point out again what I saw that led to that particular memo. And so I read Section 7-2 Point D of the zoning code as follows, which says, "The zoning board of appeals shall determine whether the reasons set forth in the application and the evidence deduced during the public hearing justify the granting of the conditional use based upon the criteria specified in Section 7-2 or Point A." Then Section 7-2 Point G says, "The secretary to the zoning board of appeals shall prepare a decision sheet that states the board's findings of fact and decision concerning the requested conditional use of the board chair's signature." That language is not suggestive of, it only happens if there's a yes vote, and is limited to that perspective. It just says that a decision sheet shall state the board's findings of fact and their decision on the application. So in my mind, the language clearly provides that a decision sheet must be prepared for every case regardless of the outcome, and does require findings of fact to be made by the board. The decision at issue that came about from the October meeting did not have the findings of fact made by the board in support of what the end result of that October meeting was, which was a denial of the application. I believe that without the board having made findings of fact to support that decision, an appeal of the decision to circuit court would most likely result in the court remanding the case to the ZBA to do what the zoning code, in my mind, again, suggests that is required. In order to avoid the matter going to circuit court only to be returned to the board, I advise staff that the case should be returned to the ZBA in order for the board to make a legally sufficient decision based on the requirements of the zoning code. My opinion has been that the board would need to readdress the case in order to more fully discuss the requirements of the zoning code, make those findings of fact, and conduct a vote based on those findings of fact to comply with the zoning code. That backdrop led to what my original memo suggested as a recommendation, which was a motion to reconsider, so I'm going to touch on that at this point. So at the time of my initial memo, I believe the most straightforward mechanism that could have been used to have the board readdress the case was a motion to reconsider. Generally, according to Roberts' Rules of Order, a motion to reconsider would be made at the same meeting as the original decision and vote, so we recognize we're kind of off a little bit on that. But based upon the circumstances that occurred at the conclusion of the hearing, staff requested my guidance, and that's what's built into the time of this not occurring at the same meeting that the case was actually heard. So they want a guidance on how to address the failure to provide the findings of fact at the time of the decision and vote as required by the zoning code. After consulting with me, I determined that this decision was legally insufficient based on the requirements of the zoning code, and I advised the staff that the matter needed to be readdressed by the board, and a motion considered to reconsider would be the most appropriate, even though it's not perfect, mechanism to accomplish having the case actually readdressed to complete what I believe the zoning code requires. Because the purpose of a motion to reconsider is to permit a body to correct erroneous action, and this is not a negative. That term is just built around what the Roberts' Rules of Order talked about in terms of a motion to reconsider. This is not a negative to the board in terms of the end result. It is really just built around the idea of, hey, we think there was a little missed in terms of completing the action, we want to have this readdressed in order to do that. And so that's where I have a slightly different opinion as most, oddly enough, right? Attorneys are like doctors, that you can see, seek different opinions and then get them, is where I classify what these are as administrative hearings. I know the terminology used is public hearing, and that has a couple of different connotations. And typically, Roberts' Rules of Order, in my mind, are built around running a meeting in and of itself. They're not necessarily really driven to the idea of administrative hearings and that kind of a process. But understand, it's just Roberts' Rules of Order are there to try and help facilitate things. That's why I felt that the motion to reconsider was really the closest way to kind of address what we felt was kind of the miss on completing what the board needed to do for this particular case. So in that vein, what I had suggested then was that the motion to reconsider would not result in a rehearing, like starting over from scratch. We didn't necessarily believe that needed to go back to the beginning and restart. We just needed a mechanism to try and complete what needed to occur based on my view of the zoning code. So the record on the case was closed at the conclusion of the hearing in October, which would result in no new evidence or testimony being received by the board. Any direct communication with the board or any submission of new material, including emails, in my mind, would be viewed as ex parte communications. As I said, I classify these as administrative hearings. We're not in court, but these hearings are kind of, in a sense, somewhat in the same vein of that idea. If I go to court on a case, the other attorney's not present, and I'm trying to talk to the judge to convince him to do what I'm asking him to do, without the other attorney being present to be able to rebut or talk against what I'm asking for, that creates a problem. The judge is going to end up throwing me out of court. And so that's what, again, we were trying to avoid the idea of having that occur in order to allow the board to readdress the matter and actually kind of bring this to a conclusion that we felt the zoning code requires. Ex parte communications could affect the legitimacy of the decision, and even public input as email submissions could be seen as an attempt to provide further testimony regarding the case. And so I have understood that there has been that kind of circumstance occurring where there's submissions being sent directly to board members. This is not a negative to anybody who's done that in terms of submitting those. It's just, in my mind, kind of par for the course. I've been around a long time, local government, and I knew when the staff came to me and said, "This is the situation we have," I immediately understood that because I felt the board needed to readdress this, and it was kind of still an open question, there was a high likelihood that there's going to be direct contact. It just happens, right? And so, but, it does create a problem, in my mind, when that occurs. And so because that's occurred, what I believe could have occurred under a motion to reconsider, I think, is kind of done at this point. I don't think that's the right mechanism anymore to kind of address this, and I'll tell you why. Also in the interim, because I don't think he was in place at the time, but subsequent to October, the homeowners association, Berenger Commons Homeowners Association, does have an attorney in place now, and that attorney has a very different opinion than I do about the result of the October meeting, in terms of what the zoning code requires or doesn't require. And so that, along with the idea of understanding that now submissions have been done directly to board members, I'm suggesting, and this is kind of not directed at the idea of the submissions anymore, it's not what you have, in my mind, is an open question. You've got what I will classify as an interested party, meaning it's the homeowners association, right, involved in this case, who has an attorney who's suggesting, they have an opinion about what occurred on October and whether or not it's sufficient or not. It's different than mine, right? So because of that difference, I'm suggesting it's an open question about what does that result really mean? Is it done and over? Or are we in agreement that the zoning code requires a little bit more to have occurred for that decision, and we need to kind of take that step at this point? So at this point, I'm suggesting the motion to reconsider is kind of done and over. It's kind of out the window. I'm not suggesting that's a mechanism to use anymore. This is now what I would kind of recommend to the board, and you can discuss and decide whether or not that seems to make sense to you. I would suggest the board schedule a special meeting and allow the attorneys of the parties, and I'm talking now inclusive, right? I'm not talking about the fact that I am aware that the HOA's attorney has a difference of opinion than I do, so we have two attorneys with different opinions. You've also got the attorney in place for the applicant. I would suggest, special meeting, let the attorneys come in and make their argument over what the result or effect of that October meeting was in relation to the ultimate decision. Does it stand? It's all over and done with, case closed, and then whatever happens after that just happens? Or is it still suggestive of the zoning code requirement for what I'm suggesting that leads to the necessity for a next step? Once the board answers the question of which one they believe is the most appropriate would dictate if any next step has to happen at all, and if so, what that next step may look like. But at this point, I'll kind of stop talking. If the board has any questions for me, I can certainly try and answer those, and then we can kind of discuss that. The purpose of the, the way the agenda was structured was built around my original memo, right? I needed to understand and let staff know was that if the board's going to readdress this case this evening, it had to be on the agenda to be able to do that, right? And so it's at that point, I think, you could kind of discuss and decide whether or not what I'm suggesting now should be a step, should be taken, and then look at scheduling that special meeting or not. But certainly right now, because of what I've explained, you got my original memo, you got my explanation this evening about where I think things currently stand, you could ask questions, kind of dive in a little bit, and then we can kind of proceed from there.
Would you like the questions now, or would you like them when we get to the unfinished business part here?
Honestly, I think you could go either way. This, you know, if you leave it to the idea of that item on the agenda, it's appropriate to do that. This item as written communications really was built around me kind of explaining my original memo, the, what's happened in the interim period to a point where now I've kind of changed direction a little bit in terms of my suggestion on the next step on that. And so if we want to kind of address that in kind of that vein, at the time of the agenda for that, we can certainly do that then.
Okay, let's, let's do that. So are there any other written communications that we know of?
There were a couple of written communications that came through. I'm not sure if those are appropriate to pass out now, given where we're at in this. Yeah, they were. Sorry, they were in the packet that was posted online, so you should have seen those.
So I see, we've seen those. So there's any continued public hearings? Any new public hearings? Okay, that brings us to the unfinished business then of this matter of ZBA 2023 conditional five. Do we have any questions for Mr. Wesner? Go ahead. Turn your microphone on.
Okay. I got very confused when I was reading your memo. And part of it had to do with the questions of fact. And when we voted, it was two to two, and we were told that a tie. No. So that was the end of it. But so when, what else was there to say? Would, we had no findings of fact about, the motion was to approve, and then it was, you know, it didn't pass. So there was nothing that we could say at the time that had to do with, we didn't agree that it met the criteria for a... Oh, no, the...
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit. So we never talked about that in the negative, that A, B, C, D, we didn't agree with that, what the staff said. So there was nothing said about that. So I don't understand, really, I...
You want to go ahead? Yeah. I'll, the place however you want to play that, which is fine. Ma'am, I think what you've done is kind of hit on the difference of opinion between myself and the HOA's attorney. My view of the ordinance says that regardless of what your decision is, the board needs to make findings of fact that support the ultimate decision. If I'm voting yes, I should be outlining findings of fact that make me say I'm going to vote yes. If I'm voting no, I need to make, say, findings, I guess, and then factual findings, that support my voting no. So when the decision sheet gets prepared, if the answer is no, the ultimate answer is no, the findings of fact that go with that decision are what's laid out in the decision sheet.
So in this vote, and in other votes, we, not everybody speaks. Somebody who makes, somebody who's going to vote no on the question doesn't necessarily give their opinion based on those criteria.
I understand. And in internal discussions, I apologize, I did not mean to continue to cut you off. What I've seen, and what I've suggested to staff, is I could see a situation play out like this. Let's say, you know, I'm on the board, and I'm going to vote yes, and I say, "I believe it meets these criteria for X, Y, and Z reasons." Next person could say, "I agree exactly with that." Next person, "Yep, I agree with that too." Next person, "Yeah, I agree with that too." So now you've got four members who are agreeing with what I've just said, where I've outlined my findings relative to my decision. It still gives the ability for the secretary to outline a decision sheet, because they'll use my statements, which are still supported by four people. And the same should be the reverse of the idea of no votes.
That doesn't usually happen.
I, I can understand. I, like I said, I've been around for a while, and I understand how kind of some boards, and this, please understand, this is not a negative. It's just...
No, I understand that.
We're all good people, trying to do the best we can to do what we're supposed to do or called upon to do relative to these boards or commissions and the things that come before it. And so I certainly understand that, and so it's...
I don't see how we can come up with the facts now.
So if I may, if I may ask, so if we basically had a vote, we did not have a resolution, we did not vote to accept, we did not vote to deny, where does that leave the legal status of this, of this case then? Is this still a live request? Is that what that means?
That kind of lends itself to what my suggestion was.
Right.
There's a difference of opinion about what the effect of the October meeting was. If the board believes the HOA's attorney that what happened, happened, it's done and over with, and whatever happens after that just happens, then that's what happens. If it comes to what my position is, then, you know, the fact of a two-two tie kind of complicates things. It's just the matter, of course, on the idea of you've got two yes, two no, and trying to, trying to line that out. My understanding historically is that if you have a motion to approve, and let's say it's two-two, or whatever the vote is that denies it, right? There's a secondary motion to say, "We're going to disprove it," and maybe you provide those findings relative to that decision at that time. So there's never, you're never in limbo, right? Because that's, that's the odd thing here is, these are, are subject to appeal to circuit court, and it can't be in limbo with the idea of that being a possibility.
And does this mean that we have to call a special meeting in order to reopen the question because notice has to be given, or could we just resolve it tonight?
Here's what I felt, and again, I know the attorneys are present. What I did not want to do, only because, again, you've got my original memo in the packet, which would have been distributed out, and it's based on a certain perspective. We're kind of changing directions based on what's happened in the interim. I did not want to blindside the attorneys with the ideas, hey, on the fly, you don't need to make an argument over the idea of what you think or don't think over this particular question. That's why I suggested is that there would be a special meeting set solely for the purpose of allowing that to occur so the board can answer that question. Depending on how they answer that question, we'll get to your point, is if you disagree with the HOA's attorney and believe that, okay, yeah, we needed to do this to really complete this case, then what I would do at that time is kind of offer you a suggestion about what I think the next step should look like.
Well, can't it just go to the city council with a tie vote? Because they decide anyway.
These don't go to the city council.
Not this one.
Oh, and so... So if we vote no, it just goes away. If we vote yes, that's it, they get it.
Not necessarily. Here's what I, if you want me to elaborate on the idea of what I think could happen, depending on your...
We had the case about...
If, if your answer, if you schedule this special meeting, and we make our arguments, and you say, "HOA attorney, we agree with you, case is over and done with," you're done at that moment in time. Nothing else is going to happen. If you end up deciding that what I've suggested about my reading of the zoning code is more accurate, and there needs to be another step taken, I would suggest what is going to happen is reopen the record to receive everything that maybe you've been getting already by emails, anything else additional that may want to be submitted by any interested party would happen, to the point where now then, you would receive everything, you've got the original record plus all the extras, and now you end up discussing and voting to try and put some finality to the idea of this case.
Well, now I'm, I probably shouldn't be confused, but I am. When we had the vote about Mall Lot on California Street, we approved it. Did we approve it? Went to the city council and they denied it. Do you remember that?
There was a, if I could jump in, there were two parts to that case, I believe. I think it was, one was, there were minor variances and major variances, so the council has to, has to ultimately approve major variances, and they ended up...
It was not about...
Right. There have been other cases that there's been a conditional use and some major variances that also had to go onto council, but they weren't, the conditional use had already been decided at that point, but council may have denied a case like that before.
But normally, conditional use permits...
Just end here, yeah.
So...
I just wanted to clarify, this, this does not require a major variance. This does not go forward to city council, right?
Correct.
So if we were to have this special meeting, would we then have to have, well, I guess depends on the outcome of that special meeting. What could be the potential decisions of that special meeting?
Either you would agree with the HOA's attorney that what occurred on the October meeting was it. That's all that needed to happen, done. Nothing then will happen after that at all. The case will be seen as being done, and whatever the interested parties decide to do after that is what they do. As I said, these decisions are subject to administrative review in circuit court. If that's a decision, that's a decision. If they just decide to say, you know what, we're going to forget about it and walk away, then that could occur. But it's, so you're one, well, you're one, the initial answer to the question is going to dictate what happens. So your decision that this special meeting is going to be, yes, we agree with them, or you may agree with my position, and then that will trigger the idea of a discussion about where I see that the next step needing to be. It's a very, the special meeting is only for the very limited purpose of answering what I believe now is an open question about the effect of the October meeting.
Would there be anything wrong with us? I, so I thought this was over and done with, and that we had the decision, but would there be anything wrong with us reopening it? Or is that then subject to the attorney from the HOA? Not wanting that.
I guess in a sense that could be, and I'm not going to necessarily speak for them on that. I mean, their belief is that the October thing was done and over with, right? So if the discussion goes, well, let's just go ahead and reopen it, I could see them wanting to argue over the idea of that, because they believe it should be all done and over with. That's why we felt internally is that what maybe we should do as a next step is just have this special meeting to let the board itself listen to our arguments over this. If, you know, they want to talk about us submitting a written statement relative to our position, fine, but to allow that to occur in terms of, because right now, again, as I said, I did not want to blindside any of them about the idea of what may or may not happen tonight. I tried to, I let them know that we were changing direction in terms of what was going to occur tonight, to let them understand the motion to reconsider was done and over with, right? But what I didn't want to do was blindside them to the point of, you're expected now to get up here and argue that point to the board, to let them answer this question, to allow us to figure out what we're going to do, if anything, next. So I just wanted, the idea of a special meeting is built around giving everybody a little bit of time to prepare for making their pitch to the board. You guys are the decision makers. It's not us, right? I'm just an advisor, I tell councils all the time to you, I don't drive the bus here, right? It's the body drives the bus. And I understand, you know, the idea is you're, we're taking multiple steps to going to get there. I just think there was a failure that needs to be addressed. They don't. I think it's, it behoves the board to answer that question. Was that enough or not? Because partly, that answer might dictate what happens in the future. If your position is that the zoning code requirements that I see aren't required, okay, I think the staff needs to understand that, and I think every party needs to understand that too, in terms of the effect of, you know, what happened in this circumstance. This is kind of an exemplary case, I guess, to have this discussion on this. But, you know, again, just because I'm the advisor, I wasn't going to suggest to you, you need to do what I'm telling you to do. I wanted to provide the opportunity for the HOA's attorney to make a formal presentation, and the applicant's attorney as well, to add their flavor to this question, but I think because we've got opposing opinions, it behooves the board to listen to that and then answer that question.
It makes me very uncomfortable, as the zoning board of appeals, to have to listen to the homeowners association attorney, the person who wants to build these buildings, and you at a special meeting, talking about the legal ramifications of all this and our having to make a decision about that, because that's not what we generally do. Other stuff, and...
I understand, but I think part of this idea is, though, is that you are subject to the zoning code language, and right now, there's opposing opinions about what that language means.
If I can give my opinion, I think that, my opinion as a board member, is that we didn't finish our job last meeting, and so logically, it would mean that we need to finish, we have unfinished business to address this meeting. I would be inclined to move that ZBA 2023-C5 be denied for the reasons that there's not sufficient justification that this proposed use would be conducive to the public convenience, and the applicant does not prove that the proposed use would not be unreasonably detrimental to the district in which it was located, in which it shall be located. That is what I would propose to move if I have a second.
We do that? Do it?
It's on the agenda as an item, I will say it that way. It, it's on the agenda as an item, I will say it that way, I guess.
Right, so, say that again, then.
I move that ZBA 2023-C-5 be denied for the reason that there's not sufficient justification that this proposal use, this proposed use will be conducive to the public convenience, and the application does not prove that the proposed use will not be unnecessarily detrimental to the district in which it shall be located.
Second.
Okay, uh, so let's see, we have, uh, some discussion. My question here now is, uh, can we do this? I mean-
We can do whatever we want, the question is-
Well-
Will we be sued, and will it go to Circuit Court?
Right, I mean, uh, can we do this, uh...
Can I ask a question?
Well, yeah, but let's just think about this a second here. So, we're jumping from, uh, not reconsidering, not accepting this advice, and you wanna deny this, period, correct?
Uh, I, I, my understanding of the situation, and as a member of the board, this is my interpretation at least, is that we have unfinished business from the last meeting. So I propose, so my, uh, my, um, proposal is to, my, to finish that unfinished business. We did not give, we had a vote, that vote did not have, um, justification to, um, pass the resolution, but we also did not have a vote to deny the resolution, the, or the case, so, that's, that's the situation I believe we find ourselves in right now.
Um, may I ask a question? How would you suggest then that we finish the business?
I suggest we have a vote, because we've already received all the evidence, um, from the applicant, we've received the city, we've received the staff report, we've heard from people in favor and opposed to the, uh, motion, and, um, or to the case, and so we have all the evidence at hand. We've examined it, we examined it all last week, and I know you weren't here last week, but you have the minutes, so you've got a chance to review it as well.
But, i- if we were to vote yes on your proposal, then what would happen?
We would, we would render a decision sheet, as we are required to render a decision sheet, um, and then the, it would be, um, a decision sheet that would be rendered by this body with, uh, very clearly defined reason for why we are rendering our decision. Uh, and if anybody wants to appeal that in court, they can, if they don't want to, they don't have to.
Okay, now, I made a point here, if we're gonna do this, I think Nancy and I need to, uh, justify, as your memo said, that we've reviewed the information and saw the video of the last meeting, that we've watched that.
I, I think that's the part of this, only because, uh, there were only four people present, knowing that there were some absent, that was what the recommendation in my original memo was, to ensure that, you know, at least for the record, it's understood that the members who are absent have reviewed everything that had occurred, as well as all the written material, uh, that would've been submitted or presented relative to this case, in order to indicate that you have a sufficient basis to, uh, you know, entertain the discussion and, and ultimate decision.
Okay, so, I just wanna say then that I've reviewed the record, including the video of the hearing, as a basis for participation in this discussion and vote. And then I'll ask you, have you, uh, reviewed the record, including the video and the hearing, as a basis for participation in this, uh, discussion and vote?
I have, uh, read the minutes. I tried to listen to the video, but I could not, the sound was not good on my computer. Um, I have a few questions that I wanted to actually ask the applicant and the board of the Berenger Commons Homeowners Association, which I don't think was covered in the minutes that I read.
Right, but I don't think we can do that. I think we have to, uh, go with what we've already heard up until this point, under this particular motion. So if, if there was a reason that we needed to do that, we probably should vote against this motion. If you think that there's been enough evidence presented, then vote for this motion, I guess.
If, and if anybody feels, if the rest of the board feels like we really need to reopen the hearing to gather any new evidence, um, then I, I would be willing to do a friendly withdrawal of my motion. I believe I'm allowed to do that under the rules, since I'm the one who proposed it, but I, I feel like, I mean, I personally feel like we have enough evidence, and I just wanna move forward.
My personal opinion on that was, is that we never really, uh, talked to the, uh, the applicant about whether he was willing to adjust some of his possessions involving lighting, involving, uh, hours, involving more trees, uh, things that could tamp down the noise and some of the issues. And some of the things I've read, I mean, they don't appear to be, in my mind, to be true, and I, I don't know, it's more, it was very hyper. The meeting got carried away, uh, with the second round of public participation, which we normally don't allow, uh, once we start discussing something. So personally, I think myself, I would, I would be in favor of hearing re, really reopening this whole thing. But, uh, the key here too is, is getting to a situation where we have an odd number of, of members, where it's not gonna be 2-2, 3-3.
Yeah.
So-
If, if, if that's the case, if, if that's the way, um, you guys feel, I, I'm willing to withdraw my motion, and then just, I, I would say we reopen the entire case. That would be my position, but-
Well, should we go along with the intermediate position of, uh-
Suppose, if that's-
Of hearing from the lawyers at a special meeting?
A special meeting, okay.
Can't we just vote?
Well, you could just vote, yes.
You could vote?
If he, if he, yes, if he wants to keep the motion in order, yes, you can vote if you're done discussing. If he feels that way, you know, we can have the vote. But personally, I think there are more questions to be answered and asked.
Do we have to decide whether we're going to vote?
No, no, if, if, if he doesn't withdraw the motion, we are going to vote, yes. And a vote yes will be, uh, to deny it.
What are your thoughts, Ashley?
Is that gonna be correct? The way you, the, no.
Voting yes on my motion would deny the application. That is what I proposed.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Oh, uh, I am fine voting, but that's also because I was, I think that's partly because I was here last week, and I understand that. I'm actually fine either way, um, comfortable voting or reopening, if that's what people feel.
Any other, any other comments? Okay, so a yes vote is to deny, a no vote is to-
You've expressed though, that you're not entirely comfortable with moving forward without evidence. Do you feel like you need more evidence?
Uh, yeah, that would be reflected in my vote.
I, well, I, I moved to, I, I will withdraw my motion then.
Okay.
I don't want to, I don't wanna be, like, railroading this past you guys.
Then where does that leave us? Does that leave us with the suggestion of having the, uh, three lawyers present their opinions to us at a special meeting, and then we decide where to move on from there?
My fear with that is if we open this up for the lawyers, why shouldn't we open it up for everyone else to speak as well?
Right. So can we make that decision? Can we make that decision to reopen the whole hearing?
The... I think we could, but that was what you would like to have, the lawyers express their opinions to us, and that would've been one of the alternatives at that point?
That's what I'll explain again, is, I don't, I don't drive the bus, I'm not suggesting that you need to listen and do what I'm telling you to do in terms of having a special meeting, let the lawyers argue their positions on that. If the decision is to make a motion to reopen this, to allow extra things to come in, allow more stuff to happen, and kind of in a sense, have a secondary piece of the hearing, if you will, and again, if you think about it, you know, I, I've explained to staff, i- if you think about it, all right, you're meeting at seven o'clock at night, right? Let's say you have a hearing that's going two hours, everybody's getting tired, it's like, you know what, let's just stop for this moment, we're gonna continue within progress, meaning it's still open and active, but we just need to bump it to a different day, because we know this is gonna take forever, right? And so in a sense, you now just, you're, you're doing that in, in a kind of a off way of saying, we're going to now kind of readdress that, because we've got a lot of other stuff that maybe we need to, to look at and address, and allow, again, the parties to, to make statements at the next setting to be able to do that, so. I don't thi, I'm just, I offer that as a suggestion, uh, you know, I don't think it's something that you should consider as mandatory to take this intermediate step. I think if you decide that, you know, based on the commentary and discussions, is that we recognize there may be some other information, and obviously, again, written submissions that wanna be presented, and just make that motion to reopen this, and have a continuation of the, of the hearing, and let that happen, and then understand the idea of completing, you know, maybe an ultimate decision, is then you kinda have an idea of what you're gonna need to do at the next setting.
And would you recommend that be a special meeting or our next regular meeting?
That can be a decision of the board.
Input from staff?
Do you guys have an opinion on that?
An opinion on what? There's been a lot of things said.
Whether there, we should have a special meeting, or continue this to the next general meeting?
Uh, when in doubt, I typically defer to my city attorney.
Say that again, I-
I said, when in doubt, I usually will defer to my city attorney, so, if, if that's the suggestion of the best course forward that Mr. Westner is making right now, I think a special meeting would be in order.
Were we, were we able to find a date that a majority of the board-
I'm not, I'm not sure, I know, I know at least some of you got back to us, but I, I don't know that we have a firm date right now, but it would be, you know, as soon as we could do it, and on a Wednesday, again.
Uh, so how much notice do we have to give?
I don't believe we have to give any further notice, since this is still-
You would, because if we're not having an understood actual date and time, we would have to give notice, but again, I think the staff can accommodate the idea, is that when we understand the date and time that's available to actually do this, is then we would send out the notice to be able to do that.
Okay, so, we're kinda feeling like you wanna reopen the entire case, and if we do that, we should do it quickly, I think, to move it along, instead of waiting till the next regular meeting. Any thoughts on that?
I, I agree with that, and I, I just don't feel comfortable having a hearing just with the attorneys and excluding other interested parties that might wanna make, make comments, because as a board, that, we regularly talk to citizens, I feel like we should remain open to that, if there's gonna be more-
Oh, sure, and I, I think that's appropriate, I have no issue, uh, there's no concern on my part about the idea of that, of that concept, so, yeah.
Is there a motion?
I move that we continue this case to a special meeting that shall be facilitated by the city staff and, uh, announced to us at a later time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Can you, can you clarify what you mean by this special meeting?
Meeting that happens in between this general meeting and the next general meeting? It's just on an off day and time, that's all.
I'm sorry, did you mention reopening the record in your motion? Because that should be clarified.
Thank you, I should do that, so I'll revise my motion. I move that we, um, re, reopen ZBA 2023-C-05, um, for consideration, uh, to receive new evidence here from interested parties, and that it be continued to a, um, special meeting that shall be facilitated by the city staff at a later date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Uh, hearing none, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Chester?
Yes.
Mr. Warrenbrun?
Yes.
Ms. Yuchtman?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Roush?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, uh, we'll need to respond to the staff as quick as possible, if you weren't able to do it today. They gave us some notes on the city website thing that I know we don't all look at every day. So if we can get back to them as quick as possible.
Yeah, and I, I believe, just, just to make note, I think the, the earliest date we could do would be three weeks from now, and still meet our notification requirements.
Three weeks from now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that, the soonest date would be December 6th.
December 6th, okay. Well, that's two or three weeks before our regular meeting, so. Okay, uh, is there any new business?
There is none.
Okay, we have, any public input? This is a, this is a time, if anybody would like to speak to the board about anything, you may do so, uh, but what you say is not reflect, gonna be reflected into the, uh, case that we just discussed, so, if you would like to talk about that, you could, if you wanna talk about the Cubs, you could talk about that, if you wanted to go home, you could go home. And since we have so many people, uh, we have, uh, I'm gonna, it would be a time limit of three minutes apiece if somebody wanted to talk, and I think you just need to sign in and state your name, and tell us what you're feeling, and there will be no, uh, no questions or answers from the board, there will be no, uh, discussion between us, it's just your chance to talk to us. Sure, come on up.
I'm Kenton McHenry, I live in Berenger Commons. I would just like to urge the board, if they haven't visited Berenger Commons, to look at it, go there personally and see. Uh, no amount of trees will change that way this will look in Berenger Commons, you might as well put something like this in Stone Creek. Um, it's a very high-class neighborhood, um, custom houses, um, please take a look at it before making a decision, uh, it doesn't fit.
Thank you.
Could you please sign in? Uh, there's that sign-in sheet on the table there, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else? Okay, seeing nobody else, uh, for staff report?
There is none.
Uh, study session?
None.
Okay, it looks like, uh, this meeting then would be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.